Oh, all that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, right?
You've been looking at that gavel.
Actually, I thought something came out that I can do this. Not as good as you. Are we good to go or do we need to wait to get the okay from?
You are good to go as soon as you're ready.
Excellent, okay. Do we know if anyone is, if Commissioner Ronback planning to be here or was this the week that he wasn't going to be here?
He didn't email me, didn't say anything.
All right, okay. We'll call the meeting to order of Meridian Township Charter Township Emeriting Planning Commission meeting of April fourteenth is called to order at six thirty-two. First thing on the agenda is calling the role Commissioner Brooks.
Present.
Commissioner McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner McCutcheon.
Here.
Commissioner Snyder.
Here.
And Commissioner Shrewsbury Chair is here. We will note if Commissioner Ronback comes later. Next item on our agenda is public remarks. This would be an opportunity for anybody who's here to speak to anything that is not a public hearing, but if there's anything else on the agenda you'd like to speak to, this would be the time to do it. There will also be another opportunity at the end of the meeting. And we do have one public hearing on a special use permit that will also offer opportunity to speak specifically to that. Is there anyone here who would like to give public remarks now? Okay. Move to approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda, April fourteenth meeting.
Thank you.
Second.
Note that Commissioner Ronback is here now. We have a motion by Commissioner McConnell and a second by Commissioner McCutcheon to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No opposed? Okay, agenda is approved. Now, I'm returning the motion to approve the minutes of March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five planning commission meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, move by Commissioner Brooks, second by Commissioner Ronback. Any discussion on the minutes?
Who was the second?
Commissioner.
I was probably.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I moved.
Commissioner Ross, Commissioner Brooks seconded.
Thank you.
Thank you, I wasn't looking and I missed it.
There were a couple of things that caught my eye. The most substantive was item seven B. The, actually, seven A first. Chair Shrewsbury closed the public, opened the public hearing at six forty-one and closed it at six four hundred and twenty-one.
Okay.
I caught that too, and it actually was opened closer to six thirty-three and then closed at six forty-two. I went back and watched the video. Just trying to figure that out.
Our chair is a deep.
We want six thirty-three and six thirty-four then?
Uh, no, it was actually six thirty-three and six forty-two, I think.
Oh, it was.
Yeah, so I think the first time was incorrect, which.
Oh, okay.
Except that then the second one was, I went and looked because I was trying to figure out what was right.
Okay.
And the sentence that follows that about the straw poll also appears in item seven B, which is not about a permit. I think that just got copied and pasted or something.
That is correct. It's worth the amendment.
That's all I saw.
Okay.
I couldn't remember, and I did not have time to go back and dig any further, but I don't know if it's appropriate to just acknowledge discussion that would sort of account for the time between. At first I was thinking, oh, we didn't have any public comment, or why did we have a public hearing that took six minutes long when we didn't have any public comments? But, so if there's not anybody who spoke, is it appropriate to put in between those two commissioners discussed or ask questions?
Yeah, yeah, I can, I can put a general statement, you know.
Okay.
Step, planning staff discuss the application with, with the planning commission.
Cause I, I think that's up above, so maybe it's just that the open the public hearing goes at the top of that section and the close of the public hearing goes at the bottom. And then the description of, you gave an overview and we asked for clarity. Would go in between those two?
That makes sense and that would actually be good practice.
Okay.
I'll go back and watch the video and I'll put that sequential order.
I apologize. This is the worst problem we have. We're doing all right, I think, but just.
No, I, I think it's a good point and I'll, I'll fix this and I'll, I'll talk to the clerk's office about it.
Excellent, thank you. Anything else on the minutes that anyone else noticed?
If we're making comments about the minutes, I just realized after I seconded the motion that I wasn't here at the meeting, so I don't know if I can actually second.
That's why I didn't.
But I seconded it. Just want to state that.
Top in and bottom in while that says you cannot.
Okay. Well, now we know.
Can I vote for it too then?
Knock yourself out.
Living fast and loose, I see.
Just shows your trust in the rest of your fellow.
In, in theory, Mr. Brooks, you did go home and watch the video.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so.
All right.
So you should be familiar with the minutes.
You are totally correct about that.
So with those minor suggested amendments, is everyone in favor of the minutes as amended?
Yes.
Yes.
Any votes? Okay, the minutes are approved as amended.
Okay.
Now we are on to item six communications, and I see that we had several in our packet.
Yeah.
Assuming everyone had opportunity, did we get any others?
You did not.
Okay. Then we can move on to item seven, public hearings. We have one public hearing on the agenda tonight for special use permit number two five zero zero seven, Mr. Carwash, major special use permit amendment.
Okay.
And I will open the public hearing. Six thirty-six.
Okay.
Thank you.
So some of you probably remember that you saw a similar special use permit for Carwash on this site. This is a new applicant.
Could I? Typically, we have a little spiel about how public hearings work.
Yes, thank you.
So for the people in the audience, this is a public hearing for a special use permit for a car wash on the Outback site for eight eight zero Marsh Road. The planning commission will discuss this tonight. At the end of the discussion, you will see what they like calling the straw poll. That is a non-binding vote that gives us as staff an indication of how they feel about this because at the next meeting, we have to bring a resolution for them to actually vote on. So what you see tonight is not the actual approval. This will come back in two weeks with a resolution either to, either to approve or deny. The planning commission is the approving body in this case, so that, that will be the decision. Once that decision is made, if this is approved, it goes to site plan. That is administrative process and we'll contact you for further information.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So this is an amendment to a former special use permit to construct a four thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven square foot drive-through car wash with twenty-four vacuum stations at forty-eight eighty Marsh Road. The parcel is two point nine two acres in size in zone C three, which is our most intense commercial district. A special use permit was granted for a three thousand six hundred and ninety square foot car wash and drive-through car wash with twenty-eight vacuums on March thirteenth of twenty twenty-three, so a little, little over two years ago. The applicant does intend to demolish the existing nine thousand five hundred and forty-two square foot building currently on site. Very quickly breezing through, it is part of the commercial core category in the future land use map. It is zone C three. The future land use and the zoning are in concurrence with this request. Two point nine two acre site is L-shaped at the corner of Marsh and Newman Road, currently developed with a closed Outbacks, Outback restaurant. Sites, streets and traffic, as noted, it's on Marsh Road, north of Newman. Access to the site is provided on Marsh and Newman. There is a seven foot wide pathway on Marsh Road and Newman Road. A marsh has four lanes and a, four lanes of traffic and a center turn lane with curb and gutter installed and is a principal arterial. The applicant did submit a trip generation analysis. I will scroll down so you can see the numbers I'm looking at. Traffic assessment is required for new special uses, which can generate between fifty and two hundred and nine, two hundred and forty-nine directional trips during morning peak, afternoon peak hours of traffic. That is directly from the ordinance. Traffic study is required, it becomes a traffic study if it goes, if it goes two hundred and fifty or over. So based on the assessment, the existing site access is adequate to serve the proposed Mr. Carwash development. Mr. Carwash is represented, as is their engineer. So if you have further questions on that, I will turn it over to them. The site is served by public utilities, public water, sanitary sewer, the existing system can serve the proposed project. We do look at special use permits under the criteria in section eighty-six dash one twenty-six in the code of ordinances. It is, this project is consistent with the intents and purposes of the zoning ordinance. It, the proposal meets land use policies in the comprehensive plan specifically. This is thought of, looked as, looked at as an infill development, main vehicular corridors, reusing existing developed land for new purposes rather than using green sites for expansion of development out into the township. The car wash is proposed to be constructed in a manner harmonious to the surrounding commercial buildings. You're going to see some slides to that effect after I'm done talking, when the applicant gets to talk. The proposed car wash is not expected to affect, adversely affect surrounding uses. It is a main commercial corridor. There are other commercial structures. The building is, is proposed to be similar to surrounding buildings, not expected, expected to be economic, detrimental to the economic welfare of surrounding properties. It is adequately served by roads, utilities and other such services. Sanit, public sanitation service facilities are adequate. I'm scrolling along and the project, the zoning ordinance states no noise exceeding seven decibels shall be emitted as measured from a property line, and the applicant will be required to demonstrate that. Staff's experience, similar uses indicates the, the site shouldn't have any problems with that, but that'll, that'll be confirmed during site plan approval. There are specific standards for drive-through car washes in the C three district that we also looked at. The first criteria doesn't apply. It is a drive-through car wash. There are no residential districts nearby. There is no indication of hazardous material storage provided by the applicant. This should be confirmed going forward, but that hasn't been indicated in any of the application material we have so far, which you have in your packet. And again, there are no residential properties nearby and the car wash is not going to, is not expected to negatively impact surrounding commercial uses. Frankly, this is a very, very similar proposal to one that was approved a little over two years ago. It was a major, it was a major amendment. They are making changes to the site plan and that triggered the ma, the major amendment. So this is not a, don't think of this as a special use, as a new special use permit. Think of this as an amended special use permit for one that's already approved. Other than that, staff has identified no major concerns, would negatively affect surrounding properties or the township at large. And I can answer questions. I can turn it over to the applicant and/or their engineer.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions for Mr. Sharpie?
Yeah, could you scroll back to the future land use map for a second?
I can.
And, I'm sorry, that's not the one I was, up above that, you have a different one in the, keep going, keep going, farther up.
I'm at the beginning of the.
I'll get you to the right one in just a second here, sorry.
Okay.
There's one that shows the parcel boundaries.
Your, the zoning? This?
No, it's pink with dash lines. It's.
Oh, it's in theirs, I think.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Page twenty-seven of the packet.
Thank you so much.
Okay. This?
No.
Nope.
The big plan.
This?
To the right of that.
The right side of that.
Scroll over more.
Okay.
That's just a big page.
There we go. Could you talk us through that a little bit? So the project site is composed of two parcels and then there's the other driveways that are other parcels and then there's the corner parcel.
The project site, I'm sorry. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So what is, the heavy dash line is, I interpreted as the project site.
Correct.
Including two parcels.
Ah, there are currently two parcels. If I remember correctly, one of the conditions of approval for site plan approval previously was the combination of those parcels. I might be wrong about that. I wasn't involved in that project. But it is currently two parcels, yes.
Okay. Just trying to make sense of some of the maps in the, in the staff report and the maps in, in this one and making sure that I'm understanding. Because it seemed to me that some of the drawings, the applicant's drawings don't include all of that in the project site, which doesn't necessarily mean a parcel.
No, it, the, the project site is, what, I, I don't, are you, are you asking about the maps in the staff report? Cause it does show this entire L-shaped piece.
No, other, probably the next page down, yeah, is the, shows the layout. I mean, one is demolition, then the next one is the.
Okay.
There we go.
Okay. This is Newman Road. This is Marsh Road.
And so that same heavy dash line is the entire site.
Right.
The thing that got my eye was the, um, driveline to the north of the Kentucky Fried Chicken.
So I'm in this area?
It's part of the circulation for this plan.
Maybe not. No, this looks like green space, that is correct. That is, that, that driveline is on a different parcel. They are proposing to come in off of Marsh here and this is not drive access. I can let their engineer speak more specifically to this.
Yeah. The, um, traffic assessment is from the prior application because it addresses the ingress and egress of that site plan.
Okay.
So that's what got me confused is because I was looking at the traffic assessment and saw a map of, of the old layout.
So Commissioner McConnell, so the, what is the implication of that?
Maybe I'm getting ahead of the applicant, but there wasn't any entrance in, directly into the vacuums from Newman Road in the prior, you would go around and enter the main Marsh Road entrance in order to stack for your car wash. I mean, in this instance, it looks like you're able to now enter the car wash through the vacuums and then get the way around to stack for the tunnel.
Yeah, that, that looks, that looks accurate.
And I, I'm just kind of honing in on that as one of the pieces of the change in site plan that causes it to be a major amendment. Yeah, and the only concern I, I can imagine with this, because I don't use car wash as much, so I, I can't really get in my mind how it's going to work, but if the, I guess there's like twenty-four places stacking for entrance and another twenty-four in the car wash, but if the stack, the twenty-four is already full, the stacking is full, then if you've gotten in through the vacuums and you're trying to get the heck out because you didn't realize it was so busy that day, how do you, how do you emerge? I mean, if you're on Marsh Road, you can see a hundred people waiting around knocking to pull in.
Anyway. Well, it is a, it's a twenty-five, it's a twenty-five foot driveline here, so I'll defer to the applicant and their engineer on this, but I would think if you just decide, if you came in just to vacuum your car, you could just turn around and go back out on Newman Road.
I guess that's true. Anyway, I look forward to hearing from the applicant about how they expect the movement.
Also, the standard disclaimer ought to be said, you know, the traffic, the traffic assessment that was done is going to have to be accepted by the Inken County Road Department at the time of site plan approval, which will happen if and or when this SUP is approved by the planning commission.
Yeah, sorry. I keep wanting to jump in. So in the driveway, the existing driveway, there's already a driveway off of Marsh into this location, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I have a few questions if I can.
Please.
I don't want to steal your direction. Can you, Mr. Sharpie, you said C three intensity or the intensity of C three when you were explaining that?
The zoning district is C three. We have three categories of commercial, C one, C two and C three. It's local, C one is local, commercial, and then it gets progressively more.
Yep.
Intensive uses as you go up to C three.
So do we, I can't recall, do, do we have car washes that fall into each of those categories or can car washes only be in one of, or C two and C three or something like that?
I would have to look and see. I don't want to misspeak. There's no problem with them being in C three, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah. Okay.
Think they can go in as special uses in the C two, but I want to confirm that before I say that.
Okay.
But, but as irrelevant to this question, to the site, because this is C three.
Okay. So does that mean that C three, so that could be like a major retailer?
Yes, yes.
Goes up to a major retailer, basically?
Yes, yeah, you get your, you get your, you get to your commercial centers and things like that, and you're C three.
Okay. One of the things I wanted to ask you about before we got to the hearing from the applicant was, is there any, uh, thing related to leakage into the ground from the materials from a car wash?
The Drain Commissioner's Office will review storm water and the Inken County, or and the, and the Meridian Township engineering staff will review the drainage and the storm, and the sewer system. At the time of site plan approval. So yes, leaking, leaking car washes into the ground, into the soil is a concern. There are agencies looking at that, but they will see that during site plan review.
Okay.
And the application that we approved got to that point with the Drain Commissioner?
To the point that the Drain Commissioner's Office was approved, was reviewing it, yes.
So what led to, so they were reviewing it. What led to us seeing this again?
The selling agent happens to be here for the property as well, and I'm happy to defer to them, but the general store, the, the general picture of it is that the, the prior developer of, from two thousand and three, or twen, excuse me, twenty twenty-three, for whatever reason, pulled out of the deal, they sold, they sold the property, they're selling the property and the people that came in and bought it also want to do a car wash.
Okay.
They just don't want to do it the same.
Okay, so, and I'm going to ask the applicant the same question, but I just wanted to hear from your, your side as well. So the, we approved this, then the property got, or the developer didn't want to continue the project and the property is sold? Or is it pending sale?
It's, uh, sounds like it's a pending sale because the seller agent is sitting in the, in the, in the, in the audience.
Okay. So I'm assuming the sale is likely to depend on approval?
That is a, I think that is a fair assumption, yes.
Okay. And so what we approved was a smaller version of roughly the same thing in this fairly large space?
Yeah, it's a slightly smaller building with more vacuum stations is what was previously approved. This is fewer vacuum stations, a little bit bigger building.
Okay. Is that any, one of the thing, the other question I had was, what are, so the vacuum stations are different, the size of the building is different, so it's larger. Are there other differences that we should know about or call out?
Apparently that there, the, the current applicant has added an entrance and an egress and entrance from Newman Road that wasn't shown on the previous plan. I didn't, I, I'm sorry, I didn't review the previous plan. I wasn't here. I wasn't here.
Sure.
I was like right on the time when I was when I came on board at the township. The initial discussions of it that led to all of that. I wasn't the staff person that handled it, therefore.
Okay.
Um, the, other than that, I can, I can, I can, again, turn it over to the applicant and they can tell you and or their engineer, and they can tell you what they've modified.
Hold on one second. So how long did they have on the current SUP? Because don't they have like a timeline where they have to be completed or else the it ends?
Um, it is 24 months, but they can come back and ask for a 12-month extension. These folks got their application in before the end of that two, before the end of that period.
Okay. So so it's so when it's approved, then they have two years to complete the work. And then they can apply for a 12-month extension?
Right.
And you're saying they've applied for that 12-month extension?
No, I'm saying that they have applied for an amended SUP that restarts the clock.
Okay, all right. Otherwise, would there have?
But they made that two-year deadline.
Okay.
The new applicant, the current applicant, made that two-year deadline.
Okay. Does that extend the ability to do the SUP, though?
Yes, the new clock will start if and or when you guys approve this, most likely in two weeks.
Okay. So the the two-year cycle, though, when would that have ended?
The permit was granted on March 13th. It would have taken effect on March 23rd because you have a 10-day waiting period. So March 23rd, 2025. So but the application came in before that date. And in time for the public hearing, that was that was the today, that was the key. They made that deadline.
Okay. So. Okay. When was the application submitted?
I don't have that information in front of me.
Okay, all right.
It looks like it might be dated February 24th.
Oh, I'm sorry, that is in the packet. Sorry about that.
Sorry I missed that, or I didn't know as I was asking.
Sorry, I didn't think of that. Yeah.
Okay, my last question for right now is, so you mentioned the seven decibels from the road?
Seventy.
Seventy.
From my property line.
I thought I heard seven and I was like.
Seventy decibels.
Like, I doubt that we can achieve that, but okay. All right, 70, okay, I get that. Okay, all right, thank you.
Sure.
Are there any other questions for staff?
Not a question, but just for, there was a question earlier about which commercial districts' car washes are allowed by special use permit? And I checked, and it is C2 also.
Yeah.
And then C3.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You mentioned that they have two years, right? That's when the clock starts. When that two years is up, what happens? They can apply for renewal, you said?
They can apply for an extension to the to the approving body. In this case, it's the planning commission.
But that doesn't happen, then it's just, that's it?
Just go and start a new application?
Yeah, that is a very general statement. I forget what the what the specific language is. I don't know if they have to, they have to complete the project in two years, they have to, but they certainly, if you're at, if you're hitting that two-year mark and you're still in site plan review, that certainly isn't qualifying.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's it. Just a clarification.
I've got myself just a little bit better organized. If you could scroll to page 41 of 65 in the packet.
Page which one?
Forty-one.
Forty-one. Okay.
This is from the traffic assessment.
Okay.
Showing the old site plan, I believe, was this is would have been the one that we approved.
Yeah.
And if you.
Okay.
If you zoom on that Newman Road entrance.
I can't. It's not zooming. I think I'm in as far as I can.
Okay. Well, imagine, if you will, when you enter the actual car wash area from Newman Road, that pavement marking says stop coming out and do not enter coming in. So there's no entrance there. And the traffic was going to come up around that drive and then go past the dumpsters to get into the main entrance somewhere.
Well, then this has been updated because this shows two directional arrows.
Yes.
Okay.
So to me, that is is one of the main changes in the layout. Thank you.
Sure. Since it's come up here.
And that one had 28 vacuum stations.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
And the current is 24.
Twenty-four, yep. That's what I read.
Okay, okay.
All right.
I'm good, thank you.
Questions, okay. It's.
The applicant is here, the engineer is here, and.
Got it.
They're well represented.
Okay. Do we have any greeting sheets for anyone who wanted to submit public comment tonight?
We do not.
Okay, then let's, I guess, hear from the applicant unless we close the public comment and then, or close the public hearing.
Okay.
And then I can never remember, I'm sorry, I should know this.
Typically, the applicant speaks after the and takes direct questions, and then public comment is a one-way. Then we have commission discussion, which is.
After we close the public hearing. Okay, so let's hear from the applicant.
Okay. This is their presentation that they previously sent me, so.
And this is not exactly in our packet, this is a.
No, this is not in your packet.
Great, thank you. Please introduce yourselves and give us your address and then go ahead.
Good evening, I am Rachel Wolf. I am the Development Project Manager at Mr. Car Wash. My address is 332 Southeast 119th Ave, Old Town, Florida, 32680.
Good evening, my name is Erin McMcKinn. I'm with Stonefield Engineering and Design. Our address is 555 South Old Woodward, Suite 12L in Birmingham, Michigan. We've been helping Mr. Car Wash expand in the Midwest over the last number of years.
Thank you.
First off, thank you so much for your time tonight. We, as stated, we're here seeking an amendment to the previously approved special land use for the tidal wave. I think the colorized site plan on the screen probably clarifies a lot of the questions that were brought up in discussions earlier. And first off, I think the key points are pointing out those differences between our plan and the tidal wave plan. Mr. Car Wash also saw this as an ideal site for a car wash, but saw that improvements could be made to the plan. I think the biggest would be, as you had noted, that entrance coming off of Newman for the tidal wave spilled right into the middle of their stacking queue. So essentially, with the tidal wave plan, customers from Marsh Road and from Newman Road would kind of be fighting for that queue lane and cutting in line, if you will. So there are really only eight stacking spaces until that conflict happened. So we looked at a better layout, flipping the queue lane to the Marsh Road entrance. That's where we expect most customers to enter from. And most car washes, you pull into the site and you do proceed directly into the pay station lanes. Mr. Car Wash also has three pay station lanes rather than two that the tidal wave proposed. And those three queue lanes and the stacking lanes prior to the pay stations provide 27 stacking spaces. That is almost double what the township requires. And as you saw in the traffic study, the peak trips during any one hour was 37 trips. So that's over the course of 60 minutes. So you wouldn't expect to exceed that 27 number, which is the stacking that we do provide within those three pay stations. Some additional differences would be, as stated, the number of vacuums. We have four or less vacuums. Mr. Car Wash typically ranges anywhere from 20 to 30 vacuums. This site in particular, you know, we heard the tidal wave meetings, we watched and went the feedback there and saw that open space was really desired at this site. And there are a number of easements on the east side of the site with a water main and a county drain. So avoiding those features and removing the entirety of that asphalt pavement on the east side of the site and replacing that with lawn. So out there today, there's less than half an acre of open space. Tidal Wave was also proposing about half an acre of open space. Tidal Wave was also proposing to split the parcel in two, so change the two existing parcels into two new parcels and potentially propose a future development, whereas Mr. Car Wash, again, saw room for improvement there. And we are planning to combine the two lots, and it'll be dedicated solely to Mr. Car Wash. So we'll be providing over an acre and a half of open space. In terms of operations for Mr. Car Wash, they operate from 7:30 in the morning to 8 o'clock at night from Monday to Saturday. Sunday, they have reduced hours from 8 a.m. to 6 p.m. As stated, most customers will enter off Marsh Road and pull into one of three pay stations. As you see a lot with the modern car washes, they operate highly on the monthly membership business model. So one lane would be dedicated to those monthly members. Their membership would be scanned, they'd proceed through into the wash, and other lanes would be available to both monthly members or a customer that would be purchasing a one-time wash or purchasing their first monthly membership. Mr. Car Wash typically has about four employees on site. Employee parking is provided along that shared access drive on Marsh Road. Employees will be staffed interior to the tunnel as well as around the pay stations to help answer any questions about wash services and help customers through the queue. From the pay stations, they'll proceed into the car wash tunnel. But before that, there is a bypass lane provided in the case that someone changes their mind about a car wash, forgets their wallet. Customer, employees have the ability to raise those gates, allow them to move through the lane and bypass the wash tunnel. After the wash tunnel, most of customers go into the center of the site and use the free vacuum area. And from the vacuum area, customers can exit again to Marsh Road, Newman Road, or either of the cross-access points. Both cross-access points are going to be maintained with both the KFC and the Target and Kroger shopping center. Again, just going back to open space and drainage, really a big improvement for the area. Driving by the site today, just across the road, it's been vacant for a long while and we think could really use some life being brought back into the site, which is why we did propose the large amount of open space. And we did start coordinating with the Drain Commission early on. I've worked with Angie Cosman before, and I talked with her about this site before the plans were engineered, just to make sure everything's in line with what the county is looking for. So we do have proposed bio-retention in a green space area on site. It's kind of nudge between the employee parking and the vacuum area. If you have driven by the site, it is a difficult site to engineer. Newman Road is about 10 feet higher than the existing building in Marsh Road, so there is grade change over the site. And the open space helps with that as well. Additional landscape improvements, in addition to adding an acre and a half of green space, we'll be adding 10 additional trees, 148 shrubs, and nearly 400 ground cover plantings throughout the site. Mr. Car Wash really goes above and beyond with their landscaping requirements. They want to provide customers with a good experience every time they come to wash their car. And also, all of the existing trees that are mature trees along Meridian and Newman are going to remain and be protected. We did read through the email correspondence from the residents and wanted to address those as well. The first being, you know, was brought up earlier, any potential leakage from the reclamation tanks or the wash process, any chemicals that are used. Mr. Car Wash uses eco-friendly products in their cleaning process, and they do have reclamation tanks to reuse as much as water as possible. Specifically, the resident brought up PFAs. You see those in a lot of car washes, maybe a couple of years back. It's an additive that helps with qualities of repellents. Mr. Car Wash reached out to their providers and manufacturers and confirmed that they don't intentionally add PFAs to any of their products. They're required to follow municipal and state requirements. So Eagle would be the governing body, and in 2020, Eagle did release guidelines and limits to PFAs. So Mr. Car Wash would be required to comply with that. The remainder of the residential comments pertain to there being possibly too many car washes in the area or why can the site not stay a restaurant? Unfortunately, it has been sitting vacant for quite some time as a restaurant with no interest. Tidal Wave had interest as a car wash. Mr. Car Wash sees that potential as well, and we are excited to, again, bring life back to the site. And as far as other car washes, there's about five that we saw in a five-mile radius. And really, the only potential competition maybe being the Whitewater Car Wash, two miles west down Grand River. It's kind of borders East Lansing, serves a lot of the East Lansing community, but operates kind of on the same business model. They're a modern car wash. Otherwise, you know, Mr. Car Wash has shown that this site would be an ideal location for them to serve the Meridian Township community. And again, the project's a great chance to redevelop the site that's been sitting here in the corridor for quite some time. We're introducing not just a top-tier service, but again, that 1.5 acres of green space added back to the community and the Marsh Road corridor where it's heavily developed, be a great aesthetic improvement to the site. These are their typical building elevations, and I think what goes a bit further is a photo of one of their sites in Pennsylvania. These are the finishes that they're proposing here in Meridian Township, so potentially the future view from Marsh Road. We're proud of what we're bringing forward tonight. We're excited at the opportunity to be in Meridian Township, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Curtis.
Use two questions. I just wanted quickly, you said Pennsylvania. Are you talking about the location here in Lansing on Pennsylvania Avenue?
No, I'm sorry for the confusion. This location particularly is in the state of Pennsylvania, but it's constructed with their new prototypes, so it's a great example of what could be brought here.
Got you, okay. A real question. When you, if if it's ever approved and all that sort of thing, generally speaking, how long does it take to build a Mr. Car Wash?
Do you have a timeline on that? It's over six months.
Yeah, eight months, roughly, eight, 10 months. Excuse me.
That's it.
Go ahead, Commissioner. I'll run back.
Do you operate any in Michigan today?
Yes, they have over 30 locations in Michigan.
Yeah, yeah, we have quite a few.
Yeah, we've done quite a few locations for them in the metro Detroit area. I know they have two kind of near here in Lansing and Grand Ledge. Those are a bit different. They're the refab projects. You can only go so far with those in terms of bringing in the new technology. So I felt Meridian Township was worthy of a good investment into a brand-new building.
Then this might be a better question with the engineer, but I'm gonna try it. So to what extent does seasonality go into your traffic assessments? Because I would imagine you have lower usage in winter months, right? With a spike then in spring and summer months?
So it is contradicting, maybe overall for the winter, you might see lower, but you get that one day that sun comes out after everyone's got salt on their vehicles, and that would be, you know, a peak day. So those are analyzed in terms of traffic studies. Also, it's not published data, but a lot of these trips are, you know, pass-by trips, especially in this area. Customers are going to the shopping centers to and from work and coming into the car wash on their way, especially with the monthly membership, taking advantage of that service that they're paying for. But in terms of the peak hour trips, 37 identified here, that is what we see typically for the single-tunnel car washes.
Okay, and then in the last, you mentioned your suppliers do not intentionally, I believe was the term, put PFAS in there?
So.
And obviously, Egle would have to stay within the limits, but can you expand on what does that intentionally mean?
So I'm not an expert on this, but PFAS are found in almost everything to some extent. So certain ingredients, you know, necessarily are not being added to the chemicals. I don't know how to elaborate on that, but her operations manager did give us a statement and said that they do confirm with their suppliers that nothing is being added to or an ingredient of their products, but essentially could be a byproduct. And again, Eagle does have limits and does enforce those regulations as of 2020. So Mr. Car Wash is required to comply with those required levels.
And Mr. Car Wash does make their own proprietary blend with no dyes and, you know, harsh things like that. So we do our best to be as environmentally friendly. So we do our best to be as environmentally friendly as possible.
Yeah, I think, obviously, those are outside of our jurisdiction anyway, but it was just a morbid curiosity when you said doesn't intentionally. So I thought it was worth diving into. I think that's it for me, but it looks like a nice building.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Oh, I've always gotten more, you know me.
Please go ahead.
I want to talk about dumpsters and staff parking, those moved as well. Can you walk us through that a little bit? And maybe the layout of the building?
Yes, so the layout of the building, you can see obviously the entrance and exit to the tunnel are on the south side. And then the north portion of the building would house a restroom, a small office for employees, as well as a mechanical room for all the equipment and cleaning products. So I think that goes back to kind of answering one of the car wash requirements of no outdoor storage of chemicals, cleaners, materials, there will be no outdoor storage here. It's all housed entirely in the building. It also kind of brings up a good point to deliveries. Deliveries are off-hours and they actually come up to the overhead door and bring everything into those storage rooms inside the building. Trash enclosure is intentionally placed within the vacuum area. It shares a enclosure with one of the producers for the vacuum motor. So with these modern car washes, there's not a vac, I'm sorry, a motor at every single vacuum. One row of vacuums would share a producer that's housed in a masonry enclosure. So just combining the trash enclosure with the producer. So it's one structure rather than two. And it allows for good circulation for the trash truck to pull in and then from Marsh Road and exit through Newman Road.
And the staff parking is kind of almost off-site?
Yeah, it's along the shared access drive. We just saw it as a good opportunity where they don't have a conflict with any of the stacking or customer operations.
Yeah, somewhere I saw the detail of the inside of the building showing those various functions you were talking about. There was one part that's called a business place or something, I guess occasionally people.
In the lobby area, we have a little business area in case people want to come in and purchase that unlimited car wash package. And there's a little kiosk usually, but it's essentially the same thing as what our attendant outside would be doing on a pad, you know.
That's it, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have some.
Go ahead, Commissioner Brooks.
So I just want to ask about the PFAS again. So the, you said you didn't add, you checked with your suppliers and that they don't add PFAS. And then you said that the, that, uh, I've blanked on what the car wash is called. Mr. Car, Mr.?
Mr. Carwash.
Mr. Carwash, sorry. So, but then Mr. Carwash has its own formula for it?
Well, we have our proprietary blend is what they call, what our water guys call it. Yeah, but we still have to get those chemicals and things from our manufacturers. So that was who they reached out to to give that statement, you know, just to clarify that PFAS concern.
Okay, so there's no added PFAS, but there is PFAS present in the chemicals. And the PFAS may be present in everything that we have, get that point? Is it present in the chemicals, though, that you're using in the car wash?
I would have to get that information for you just to confirm. I don't want to speak out of term because that is not my realm. But I can definitely get that information for you.
Okay.
If that's something.
Yes, please. So the, I'd like to ask some questions about the changes. So the building increased in size and then the parcel was, so there was going to be other development that was going to happen here. So why did it get increased in size, given that there are other car washes in the area? And that I've also, I don't know that I recall ever going by a car wash where all the vacuums are being used or that there's really that much of a line. So it seems like a large development for an even bigger amount of space.
So in terms of the parcel area or the building area?
Yeah, so basically what I'm, what am I asking here? So like, the previous development was going to have two different things that were potentially developed here. Now we're just getting one large car wash. When we do have car washes in other places, so why?
I think that, you know, a large car wash is, you know, compared to maybe the tidal wave, it is larger. The larger, I'm sorry, the smaller that you make your tunnel, the lower quality of wash you have. So to house the technology that Mr. Carwash has, this is the size of their locations standard everywhere. So not necessarily, you know, intentionally proposing a larger building, just wanting to provide that high level of service. And, you know, amending a special land use, we did look back at the previous meetings. And in our pre-application meeting with Keith, you know, it was brought up that open space, drainage and traffic circulation were kind of concerns with the tidal wave applications. So we wanted to do everything we could to address those and bring the best site plan forward to the township.
Okay.
And again, just the open space, I know that Title Wave was looking at potential development there. I don't have a site plan with the easement shown, but there's a county drain that runs along the east side of our site, south to north, and then a water main easement that comes into our site. The water main easement is actually recorded incorrectly, so it doesn't encompass the water main, but we'll be correcting that.
Yeah, I want to, if I can.
Yeah, go for it.
There was never act, just to everybody's clear, it's not like there was ever anything proposed for that second site. Like there, it wasn't like, oh my gosh, there's going to be two things there. No one ever, that was always just kind of a thought that Title Wave had, that maybe we can market this as a second site. They couldn't even get theirs through site plan. Is that what I mean?
Okay.
Okay, so it's not like you're losing a second development, because it was never there.
Okay, that's just what's confusing, so I just wanted to clarify those things. I don't know if I was the only one confused about that, but I'm just asking. I'm just, so, okay, so on that note, I'm still curious about the size and the number of vacuums that are being put here. So we only have limited space here to develop. So I get that previously, what we were talking about in the previous SUP that was approved, that those were the concerns, were a couple of years later, the space in the township that is developable keeps going down. So I, I just am cautious about like overbuilding things that don't actually need that much capacity. So when I hear about a member, monthly membership car wash, people are going to be paying for that service, right? And then a certain percentage are going to be using it. So then there's going to be cash flow into the business and potentially less use of the business, sort of like a gym would be. So if, my assumption is that that tends to happen in these kind of locations. I could be wrong, but I'm curious if you looked at building less capacity. Like I know that you reduced it somewhat. Is this the minimum that you looked at? Or is this just the best level that you would like to achieve?
So typically, Mr. Carwash does approach closer to thirty vacuums. At this location, this was the best footprint in terms of, as we've mentioned, the easements. But like you said, people are paying for this monthly membership. When they come to the car wash, they would hope that a vacuum would be available at any time, during a peak hour on a busy day. They would hope that a vacuum is available and they can take advantage of the service they're paying for. You know, like a gym membership, you hope you don't show up and the three treadmills that are there are all full. So twenty-four vacuums felt like a happy medium for the site where they can ensure everyone is serviced with the vacuum when they come to visit the site.
How many, didn't, did I see something about free vacuums, though?
Free for customers, yes.
Oh, I see, okay, so it's not, it's not free vacuums, but it's only for people who are monthly members?
Or with a, you purchase a car wash, you can use the vacuums. Some of the sites do have gated entry where, you know, traffic would be prohibited from entering the vacuum area. The site doesn't, so it may be a bit of law or system and employees will be walking the site, but the vacuums are free to customers, yes.
Okay, I see. So there's a big sign that says free vacuums. But it's only for paying customers.
I mean, if you pull in and start vacuuming out your car, we're probably not going to throw you out of there.
Okay, so, but you have to pay for a member, so, okay, well, we won't get into false advertising, I suppose. Okay, I'm guessing that you won't answer this question, but I'm just going to ask anyways. What's the percentage of memberships that actually use the car washes once they're set up?
Well, we have, I don't know the usage of each individual, but very close to two point two million unlimited car wash.
You don't have an average at locations in Michigan?
I'm sorry.
Was it how many people use their membership that have a membership?
Yeah, I don't know how many use it. I'm assuming they all do, but, you know, like you said, just like a gym membership or whatever, sometimes people don't stick to cleaning their cars or doing squats. I don't know, but.
You don't know?
I don't know the percentage of how often each individual uses their membership, no, I do not.
Okay.
I'll put it seasonal.
Yeah, it could be.
The last question I have is, so this was approved in 2023 and then a month before it was slated to, the SUP was, either had to be, get a twelve-month extension or end, then we got this application. And I'm just, it seems like odd timing. Is there a reason that it happened at that very instance?
I disagree respectfully.
Okay.
I think it's perfect timing. They, they made the deadline, they made the cutoff. They, they submitted a legal application for an amended, for an amended SUP. But if they hadn't, this would be here in exactly the same form, through the exactly the same process as a new SUP application anyway.
Yeah.
Like, it's, it's, so the timing is, but the timing was within our ordinance for an amended SUP.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner Robb.
So one more, back to the PFAS thing. I did a quick search here in Eagles, Eagle, sorry, website, couldn't find any violations relating to you guys. Have you ever had an issue with PFAS in any one of your thirty-one locations in Michigan?
Not that I'm aware of, no. I have only been with Mr. for two years, though I will say.
I mean, how many, so how many Mr. Car washes have you opened in your two years with Mr. Carwash in Michigan?
I am in Florida, I'm usually down there, so this is kind of a one-off for me. None in Michigan, this will be my first one, hopefully.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Other question. Thank you. And looking at the site plans, I saw the, like the saw cut lines for the asphalt removal, which I find tremendously exciting. The green space I find tremendously exciting in that area. I was just wondering, as I was looking at the site plan with the saw cut lines, there are a lot of lines going on. So if, if it's possible to maybe just kind of help me understand, just by looking at the image on the screen, the green, is the green space really going to be everything that I'm seeing that is green?
Correct, yeah, so anything on the aerial, so the existing imagery in the background of the site plan shown is what we're not touching. So that stub coming in from Newman and the access drive along Marsh, those are going to remain, just we don't want to disrupt access to any of those existing uses. Everything else will be brand-new pavement or grass, so the grass that's shown is accurate.
Okay, so just to be clear then, the green is not going to be pavement, it'll be grass?
All lawn, yes, green, grass, growing lawn.
Because I heard you mention ground cover, so I assume that's mostly.
Yeah, the ground covers are interior to the site, along the building. Mr. Carwash proposes river rock, so there's ground cover plantings in there.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Any other questions? I felt commissioners have asked anything I might have been interested in knowing, so I don't have any. So thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff, and I'll let you, more from the applicant? Is there anyone now having heard what you heard who would like to now give public input on this? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing at seven thirty and would entertain just sense of the commission inclination to give staff a direction for preparing a resolution for our next meeting. Those who would be in favor of support for this proposal, please say aye.
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 Aye, any opposed? Also supportive, any final thoughts?
Yeah, I, I join Commissioner Snyder in welcoming an increase in open space and what I think is probably a better traffic layout. And I'd like to express my sympathies to the applicant for having to sit through a recording or a private meeting to understand, that's, we don't get that often, so yay, thank you for doing that. In response to the public comment, certainly there's some expertise on the Environmental Commission that could look into the issues of PFAS regulation and see if there are things that a municipality can do in that regard, since we don't manage stormwater or that's, we rely on the Drain Commissioner. And if our water treatment plant is feeling like car washes are causing a problem, then we should look at what we can do about that.
Commissioner Robb?
So, well, I am supportive. I will address, there were some comments in the public about, you know, getting more restaurants. And as the guy that pounds about restaurants every, every meeting, I am certainly sympathetic, but to the applicants, like, the site has sat vacant, right? So it's got to have some sort of use. And then second, since then, the old Chicago there has also closed. So it's not like there's not more space for restaurants or other opportunities. And I also think that, last time I heard, the rental rate at this particular former Outback was cost prohibitive to many of our smaller businesses and smaller restaurants. And I'd much rather have something sitting in the space being used than frankly, a dilapidated Outback Steakhouse.
Also, if I could just kind of add to that, I think one of the concerning running themes in a lot of public commentary that we have received, communications that we receive is the theme of a misunderstanding of our purpose. You know, we don't get to decide, we're not like, yay, we want a restaurant, so no to the car wash. You know, that isn't how it works. So there is that perception, though, and it's an unfortunate one that, you know, what we do is we align decisions with the ordinance and the ordinance is aligned with law. And so, you know, property owners have the right to use their property in a manner that lines up with those things. And so it's very difficult to say no when what they're doing, what they're proposing follows ordinance and follows law, so.
Thank you all, those are good, good helpful statements. And it is true that I, I too would love to see and would promise to frequent restaurants in the township, should anybody choose to develop one. I, I'm very supportive of that use. I'm also supportive of, as you say, not having a space that sits vacant, but to really bring it back up into a productive business that both brings jobs to the community and also develops the site in a way that I think gives it at least some.
New life.
New life, yes, and vitality. I, I've been in cities or places where you see a lot of empty, empty buildings and that's not good and it sort of fixed your front porch, you want to have a major thoroughfare in our, in our township showing a sign of activity. And I'm also trusting of businesses who don't invest, if they've not done the research, to determine that it has a likelihood of success. You know, they're, they're putting an investment into the community and I don't think they would do so in this case, if they didn't feel that it was going to be successful. And I'm sure that's based on some market research, so.
Cool, see, in my limited experience, the, there's the other car wash mentioned that was on Grand River a couple of miles down, I mean, that's packed a lot. It's quite consistently quite full, so I'd, I'd be happy not to have to drive all the way down there to get to a car wash.
We want to see all of our township businesses successful. Thank you. Okay, so now we are on to item eight, unfinished business. Item eight A is special use permit number two five zero zero six, Precious Sprouts Group Childcare. And I thank you for your patience as we conducted our other business.
I warned them.
Okay, thank you very much, go ahead.
This is the second meeting for special use permit number two five zero zero six, Precious Sprouts, to establish a group childcare home for up to fourteen children at two one three seven Butternut Drive.
to establish a group childcare home for up to 14 children at 2137 Butternut Drive. I have no further input above and beyond the, what was stated at the public hearing. We've had no further comment from anyone in the public on this application. The applicant is here, and you have a resolution to approve in your packet.
Thank you.
I move to adopt the resolution of frequent special use permit number 25006 to establish a group childcare home for up to 14 children at 2137 Butternut Drive.
Thank you, Commissioner McConnell. Seconded. Seconded by Commissioner Snyder, Vice Chair Snyder. Moved and approved, moved and supported the approval of special use permit number 25006. Is there any discussion?
I know, but I still don't like the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act.
So noted. We can communicate that at some point if our secretary would like.
You could just stamp that down for all one of these.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, then I think we are ready to vote. Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner McCourty?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Roback?
Yes.
And the chair votes, yes. So, this is approved. Thank you.
Thanks for your presence.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is item 8B.
Okay. Well, that's the, like I said, well, I'll get a letter out to you tomorrow.
Thank you. This is a zoning amendment number 25002, amending section 86-755, the schedule of requirements for parking space.
Yep. No further comment over what was spoken of at the public hearing and several meetings before that. This achieves the following. It reduces impervious surfaces and future developments, modernizes land uses in the land use list, and simplifies some of the parking calculations for ease of use during site plan approvals. There is a resolution to approve this. This is a recommendation to approve. This is a text amendment. This would go to the township board for their review and subsequent approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion to? To, a motion for the, to move the resolution in our packet?
If I could get to the right page.
I was gonna say, I'm scrolling back and forth, so I apologize. Thank you.
Or maybe if Mr. Shortkey.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There we go. Yes, it's your motion, adopt the resolution, recommend approval.
Yes, I would like to move to adopt the resolution of zoning amendment number 25002 to the township board. Do I have to read all of that? Sorry.
No, in accordance.
In accordance with our revised draft ordinance language, that's my bad. I was reading the wrong line. Hopefully, everyone understood what I was trying to do.
Thank you.
I do, and I second the motion.
Chair Snyder is there on second to that motion?
I second the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner McConnell. Is there any further discussion on this resolution? Okay, I will.
Exciting, it's finally gonna get done.
Okay, I call for the vote then. Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner McCourty?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Roback?
Yes.
And the chair votes, yes. So, this will move forward, then to the motion is approved, and move forward to the township board.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Other business, we have none. Reports and announcements, township board update.
On April 3rd, the township board did approve the veto resign on Doby Road. Tomorrow, the board is looking at a new appointment for the vacant planning commission chair, or, excuse.
Hello?
See.
HR is outside.
I was looking up, it is literally a chair.
Thank you.
Okemos, local investments, special use permit is up for action tomorrow, and the board is discussing, this is not any vote or anything, this is ongoing discussion of the senior slash community center and the Brownfield Housing Tiff Amendment.
Great. Any questions? I'll report. Okay, we have some reports to share.
Yes.
Close to?
There it is. The April 2nd Environmental Commission meeting, the commission approved a recommendation from the committee that reviews our green grant applications for small environmentally related projects that contribute to achieving the goals of our climate sustainability plan. The green grant funding tends to be quite small, and it, and the past has gone mainly to schools, and in the last round, more and more neighborhood associations are successfully applying for funds to do invasive species removal or naturalization projects. So, that's about $20,000 a year that the township board provides the Environmental Commission to spread seed money around the township. And at the same time, the board provides funding for more direct, larger projects to achieve climate sustainability plan objectives, and staff are proposing a potential project on the west side of Lake Lansing in a park that sees flooding, so flood mitigation, naturalization project. Prior use of that fund has included solar panels on the public services building next door and their carports, so. I saw this weekend, one of the, I called him the grandfather of the Environmental Commission. He was actually chair of the Wetman's Review Board, which morphed into the Environmental Commission years ago, and it's a far different situation at the moment, that there are actual funds that we can distribute and get wonderful projects going, so.
That's great. What's the average grant that you give to a school or a community or a neighborhood association? Like, if it's 20,000 a year?
This time, it was averaged about 3,500. The awards range from 1,000 to 5,000, 7,000, sorry.
Thank you. Wow.
And there's always a major contribution by the requesting organization, always in labor and oftentimes in materials as well.
Well, that a requirement of the application, or just?
It's strongly suggested.
Do you end up with more demand than you have funds to give, or does it balance out?
So, we're getting there. We're getting there, and it's gonna become more competitive, I think, and I, hopefully, that'll convince the board to find additional funds, but, yeah, word is spreading.
Great. Thank you very much. Any other updates?
Oh, April 26th is the next recycling event at Meridian Mall.
Oh, good to know, at the mall?
At the farmer's market, I believe you. It's on the township website, don't take my word for it, but they'll be doing electronics and stuff.
Oh, my husband will still have to hear that.
Your stuff, spring cleaning. And if you've got a couple hours to spare on that morning, go to the township website and sign up for a shift directing traffic.
We're out of town that day. That morning.
People are running for the exits.
No, I, no, I, we might have to, like, skip a birthday party to go recycle our electronics. Okay, thank you. Anything else from anyone else? All right, project updates. Do you have any project updates for us?
No update today.
Okay, public remarks, so you don't see anyone who would like to give public remarks? Any additional commissioner comments?
I have one.
Please.
I'm just curious if anybody has thoughts on this. So, do we ever consider or think about, like, in the, so, in the staff analysis on page 18, for the special use permit 25007?
Okay.
So, it says, "The project will not be detrimental to the economic welfare of surrounding properties of the communities," is question five.
Yeah.
And then, question four is, "The project will not adversely affect or be hazardous to existing neighboring uses." And when I think about the car washes, or any sort of, it's almost like, it is a commercial use, but it's almost like it also has an industrial effect in some ways. And I think about those two questions, and I think about the township and where Aquifer is, but also just what's happening in the village of Okemos right now, and what we're trying to do with those places. I just wonder, the, like, are those two questions fair consideration for another car wash? Like, especially of this size? Like, I know it's relatively small, but it's a 2.4-acre site, it's right around all these other things, like, is there, is there, like, when is the consequence of that? And if there is a consequence of that in the ground, do we consider that in this process?
If, if I may.
Please.
I don't have an explanation for that, but I do, when we were, when I was on the, on the, more, the same issue came up, and I even, I raised the same concern, too, because of the marijuana facility that was going up on Jolly Road. Because, if you look at it, "The project will not adversely affect or be hazardous to neighboring uses." So, what, if I'm not mistaken, what, what was explained to us was, when they did their, I'm calling it marketing research or what have you, I'm gonna mess it up, I'm gonna do my best, that it did not show any evidence of how, and I know this is different from a car wash, but the same principle applies. It doesn't show any adverse effect on the neighborhood. There was something about a radius that was used, and Brian, maybe you know this more than I do, but that's the type, mile radius or something like that, and it didn't affect the neighboring, like, neighborhoods or the businesses around it because of, you know, the.
There's a one-mile, I forget what the, I forget the one-mile, what the one-mile radius on a marijuana application is, but there's a one-mile, some we look at, of stuff within one mile. I forget what it is, though.
Yeah, I remember, is it Tim?
Not in marijuana. This is marijuana specific. I remember there being a one mile, but I haven't, I don't remember. I have to look that up.
I think he used that to, to kind of explain why this, like, this wasn't in violation, or it wasn't in violation of this.
Who was, who?
Is it Tim?
Yes, Director Schmidt.
Yeah, Tim Schmidt, who explained it to us at that time. So, I don't know how much that helps, but.
How about, can I?
Go ahead, please.
So, queer Brian, on this structure analysis, the project, like, this analysis that's done, these, I think it's what, nine factors? Where do these nine factors or so come from?
The zoning ordinance.
Zoning ordinance, okay, so it comes from the zoning ordinance. Have you ever written up or seen written up a project where you or staff averred that a project would adversely affect the, or be hazardous to the existing neighboring uses?
I have not done that in, since I've begun with Meridian Township, I have done that.
Okay.
I'm not at all gonna get specific about what I'm about to say.
Yeah.
I have had conversations about a potential development on a vacant parcel, where I could easily see writing a negative statement for one of these criterias if they pursue what they're talking about pursuing.
Okay. So, can we, can we set Meridian Township aside? You've also worked in Howell, right, that you said?
I didn't. I worked, Livingston County, I spent time, Bath Township, six years in Kentucky, you know, different places, yeah.
Okay, and similar have, so, let's set aside this Meridian project, which is probably good if you're not to talk about.
No.
If, if we looked through your records in other places of employment, have you ever written down for number four here that a project would adversely affect, or does, or does, do you tip an applicant off that you might write that, and it tends to change their direction?
So, to answer the first part, the second part, yeah, we'll, we'll definitely, I have no compunction about calling an applicant and saying, dude, you're on the wrong track. I tell applicants before they apply, come sit down with us.
Yeah.
They, they did. They sat down with Keith, and that really helped. It saves a lot of headaches to a lot of people. I would probably, so if you went back and looked, I probably didn't write something as overt as saying, we should deny this on the face of it, but this is a concern, and this is why, and this is something to consider, is a very, very valid statement.
Yep.
This particular, looking at this, and since we're, since we're, this should probably be worded somewhere along the lines of, "Information available to staff does not indicate any detrimental effects. This will be researched more fully during site plan review."
I think more of what I'm fishing is to hear, like, okay, I once found that a project would adversely affect the neighboring uses, and that project was, I don't know, a free-range coyote farm in a, in the middle of a subdivision, right?
That is, that would be very detrimental, yes.
Right, like, how absurd does something have to get to violate number four?
We've had instances where staff have recommended conditions. We've had.
Yes.
Situations where commissioners have decided that something was adverse, and I can recall instances where fencing or landscaping.
Yeah.
Was required.
Yeah.
Because it was, looked like it was gonna be adversely affecting the neighbors unless you shielded them from whatever it is that you're building, so.
Yeah.
But if the staff bring us a, a staff report says, they're insisting on applying, they told them they didn't meet this criteria, but they, they wanna fight it out with you.
I'm just trying to find, you know, what, maybe similar to what you're, like, what is something that would concretely say this would adversely affect, so we even know when that supplier hits.
That's the, that's the problem, isn't it? These are very subjective statements, aren't they? "Project will not adversely affect," well, my, my idea of what, of might adversely affect is, might be different than yours. Also, it changes with the context.
Sure.
We've got C, we got C2 properties where it's been noted, you can do a special use permit for a, for a car wash adjacent to residential properties. That changes that picture, because this is not surrounded by residential properties.
Correct.
That would change that meaning, the interpretation of question four.
Yes.
Maybe then we are saying, we need additional screening. Maybe then we are saying, you know, and then, and then you get into a situation where we don't wanna put in any additional screening, then you guys can say, well, then we don't have to approve your SUP.
Correct.
Because you don't have to approve your SUP.
Yeah.
So, I've been on this board for, gosh, it's been about six or seven years now, I think. I'm trying to estimate, but prior to that, I lived in the city of Lansing and was on the planning board in Lansing for 10 years, and it wasn't unusual there for, and the development there is very, very different than in the township, just because of the types of land use that they have and the properties that they have available. But we would have staff, you know, share concerns, and they did a different type of review, or different departments within, I think you could aggregate township responses, but they would have the fire department and the traffic, and everybody come in separately with, with review and different concerns. And, and sometimes they were there, and then we also had a longtime member of the board who really, really liked buffering, and so we would often put conditions on, and because of the way they were doing infill in existing sites, there was often a need for more landscaping or more things to mitigate possible affecting surrounding communities. So, I think if we, if we ever get to a point, I mean, especially something like this with a special use permit that is within our purview to suggest those, and if we ever thought that it was necessary, I would like to encourage people to at least raise it. It might be something, it was nice being able to count on that member to be the buffering person, so I never had to think about it, because he did. So, you know, and I can always count on Commissioner McConnell to talk about alternative transportation and bicycle parking and things like that, that, that help with pathways and reducing vehicular traffic. But, but if anybody wants to be known as the buffer person or the whatever, I appreciate those perspectives, because it's not always something that I would immediately think of, but quite often, it's a really good suggestion. So, if you have thoughts, questions on future decisions we're making.
Well.
Don't hesitate.
I appreciate all those comments. I, the reason I ask that is because I wanna be known as the long-term consequences guy. And space maximization, because the, the thing that I worry about. Because the the thing that I worry about in this case is just what does this turn into next? Like there's, we know that there's a growing movement of hedge funds who are buying. Properties and then putting car washes on. This is public record. It's it's in the news. And so what I wouldn't avoid is that happening in Meridian Township. And it's. And I'm not saying that that is happening here. It's just something to think about. But the the other thing here is that we do have limited developable space, developable space. And. A car wash creates a different. Outcome for a piece of property than does an Outback Steakhouse that's sitting there still.
That's a great point. Would the? Open space shown in this application. Become protected open space would? Would that green space be undevelopable? Could it be?
Could it be in the future? Could it be seamless?
Well, I imagine, you know, somebody who comes along later and says to the drain commissioner, huh, I'm going to put another parking lot on top of that. They can say, no, not so much.
Look, let's have an easement on the eastern side is what.
Right.
We've heard. I don't. I still don't. I don't know what that means exactly, but.
It it means they can't build on top of it because there's a water main underneath it.
So.
A water main. Well, the drain easement means that there might not be anything on top of it, but the drain commissioner won't let you build in it because they maintain. That is right of access.
Right.
I don't know the specifics on where those are on that site, but there 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 are a lot of them.
Right.
To answer the question, could you? I think that would be really. I think that would be problematic to the point. I don't think you could. I mean, you're approving this with a certain amount of green space. The moment somebody screws with that amount of green space, I would argue that screws with the with your SUP.
Right, but if they corporate sells it two years from now and somebody knocks it down and decides they want to build a warehouse.
They won't get the drainage approval for that.
They're not going to get the drain commissioner to go along with.
Right. I I say that with the knowledge of what happened to Title Wave on this site, like they're not going to get the drain commission approval. I don't think this site could handle two two developments on it. Title Wave's idea of splitting that property, I don't think it would have happened.
It's just small space. What else? I wonder too, like, I think maybe to the point like these can be subjective. So. So the the one point I'd like to make about that is that when we're looking at. These different standards for issuing a special use permit, even though they can be subjective, there are so many people weighing in. You've got the staff analysis. There's us. There's the board. There's the public. We're getting commentary and more information from the applicant like I. There's just a deluge of information coming in to inform what is a subjective, some somewhat subjective standard. So like I I feel okay about that. I think that's part of the point of this whole process. People coming together to analyze that subjectivity piece, but so so but then probably more to that question of like. What do we want long term? I think that instead of turning to these narrowly focused yet subjective. The indicators of whether or not to give a special use permit, maybe what we should turn attention to. Is like, what does the ordinance say and does maybe commercial two, maybe? Special use permit for a car wash in commercial two is something that really is probably never going to get approved anyway, so shouldn't be in the ordinance. So what I'm trying to say is, instead of focusing in on this. Maybe the focus needs to be more on what is existing in the current ordinance and does that fully align with the long term vision? Cause I could see a case for potentially. Editing that out, amending ordinance to not include a car wash in commercial two, but only limiting it. To commercial three. It'd have to be obviously a longer term discussion, but it just seems to me like that's kind of more what you're maybe getting at.
You are correct.
And the other thing too, I I feel like. I used to have a better sense of, and I think some of it is just there are a couple of things that are stalled and sort of waiting for momentum to pick up. But I I used to periodically, we would get an update from the economic development manager and we would hear or the. Whoever was working in that space and and would hear sort of what was. Where they were going, what they were looking for and and the various corridor and and especially area. Like in the term, but we we had a sense of what that was because I think then we we hear the vision. We we did the master plan and we were talking about that. We know what we'd ideally like to see happen in various parts of the township and where things are developable. We've talked about that, but. If there's ever a meeting where we don't have a full agenda and it works for. You or someone else to share more about kind of where things are going. In in terms of the vision for the township, that might be helpful to us to help align what we do.
Would would that be acceptable to you in like the form of a like a communication like? Here's an overview of, you know, to the planning commission. Which I think would be a kind of an easy ask. I maybe give me, let me look into it.
Definitely that and even better if it's possible to have somebody here where if we had questions, we could ask them. You know, I don't want to tack somebody's already busy schedule, but so a written a written update would be great. And then maybe if we have more questions and think it's worth it, we could.
I will bring it up to Director Schmidt tomorrow.
If I could tack on to that too, I personally be interested in hearing about like who is coming to to the township with inquiries about. We'd like to set up shop here. What are what is?
A lot of a lot of that is not public until they file an application.
But not even like a specific company, but like types of businesses, you know, this is the type of interest that we're seeing.
Well, I think you can answer that question. What are you seeing? You're seeing car washes and you're seeing storage units.
Well. That necessarily translates though to who might be coming here with interest, but then they walk away because they find out or learn. That, oh, it's not going to work because of these reasons.
That's a good example, actually. We had the climate controlled storage facility that was proposed on Grand River Avenue. The planning commission recommended denial of that and the township board denied it. That was a special experiment.
Well, so here's a.
That went to the board because it was over 25,000 square feet in size. That that triggers.
But looking at kind of the things that I personally see as vibrant developments, it's, you know, small shops and restaurants. And sort of the things that make a thriving, you know. Storage unit is nice and a car wash is nice, but when I think of community, the things that make community are are those the restaurants and the stores and the specialty stores. And so maybe it's more what is our? What is our, what are our efforts to market to those or help grow and invest in that kind of thing? And and what are the barriers that they're seeing? I know we had the one restaurant, Tante, that took a long time to open and. Was there anything that the township could have done or that that wasn't a planning commission?
That was that was on them. They took a long time to get their building permits approved.
And and I know there were some extenuating circumstances there and it sounds like they're doing really well now, so I'm happy to hear that, but are there things that? Either from a planning perspective or as just community members who are interested perspective, are there things we could do to help? In the attraction of the kind of community building businesses that I think we all say we want to have when we. And and there may not be. I mean, from a planning perspective, there may not be anything we can do, but if there is, I'd like to be a part of that growth and see what we can do to help.
I'm sorry. I was just going to say at the end of the day, though, I mean, I get it. We can like. Venable our policy and see how we can make it, you know, what's the vision and all that stuff, but competition is competition too. And so you you're not going to get seven car washes because they're all not going to, you know, if another company comes in, oh, nah, that market share is already taken. So just like you only have so many coffee houses, you're going to have so many restaurants. That's the reason why Outback closed. Because there's, you know, the market didn't call for another Outback or for an Outback. I mean, so competition. Well, I mean, but.
Yeah.
I remember we used to have that that him, I forget the name of that restaurant and that was a bank that's over there now. And they just closed the one that's on the Grand River. I wish Jerry was here, you know what I'm talking about. It was like an old restaurant there.
Paul Revere's?
Oh, Paul Revere's.
Uh, it was wherever that. It's it's a bank now. Like.
Hobby Lobby?
No, 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 by near Walgreens. If you go a little bit further. West. It it was a it was a it was a restaurant there called something Hen and they when they left, this was back in 2002. When they left, they they just put up a sign that said, we're closing and they didn't have any out of business because. They didn't, you know, customers weren't coming.
Yeah.
So I mean, my point is. Market share is also going to drive who comes here and all that stuff too.
I think your coffee house theory is being tested though, because there's about a bajillion coffee houses now between, you know, Starbucks and Boca and Co. And.
And and it is when I drive by some of those, I'm not going to name names, but the lots are empty. Sometimes the lots are not empty, but a lot of times, me and the parking lot. So. How how often are people going to all these different type of businesses? I think. Market share is, you know, looking at the market and who's going to these type of businesses, especially post COVID where folks are used to door dashing and all that kind of. What that also drives it along with what we're discussing in terms of what's our vision? How can we set policy? How can we help? I just wanted to add another layer. There's also a competition there too.
That little Thai restaurant there in the Four Corners is going to close.
Because of their the rent.
Yeah, that whole.
That's what they said.
It is. It seems, what's the right word I want to use? My wife is close with Art Unlimited and I mean, it seems to be coordinated. How about that?
Yeah, I got you. Yeah.
It seems to be coordinated.
So.
It's a interesting point, though. Art Unlimited is moving. Thai Restaurant is closing.
Yes.
Tobacco Shop will.
Tobacco Shop, which in a in a vacant building that was refurbished and mixed up, right? So that's yes, we're getting tobacco shops.
I I do have one follow up comment to everyone's points, which I think are all valid, and I do think that there's market forces that are at play, both local. In which people go to certain businesses. I think that happens. And I to that point, I think that we have a great community that is thriving, thankfully, and that we. Have like 14 different grocery stores within a two mile radius and somehow we can support all of them. We literally live in. An amazing community with all of this. And so when I think about that, it's like. The there are market forces and if a big business wants to come in here, they're going to figure out how to do that. So when I think about how we structure policy and ordinances is. There is an edge in certain directions. So how do we support the edge that we want? That aligns with the master plan. So I think when we come back to Commissioner Snyder's point about potentially changing the ordinance. I for one would be open to thinking about the ordinance, not not only that we. Potentially change what can go into what commercial zones. But also would be open to considering. Are there, do we alter the zoning? I know I'm going to butcher the word here, but what I mean is our map.
Future land use.
Future land use map where we say we would, this is a designated area for this. And we say, look, car washes, that's it. Or whatever the thing is that we care about, because the only way that I feel like what I've experienced here to do that. Is to Commissioner Snyder's point is actually to change the ordinance. The questions here are subjective in nature and so we could argue in many cases, both directions, but in general. Saying something that adversely affects or has had to do with existing neighborhood uses. I don't know what to do with that, but the ordinance. I think. Would be worth looking into and I know that we're looking at the parking ordinance right now. But to come back to the market forces, there are local market forces and there are also external market forces where. Large places that have lots of resources are looking to stuff those resources. And my suspicion is that if you own a property in Meridian Township for two years and then decide to sell it two years later. It probably increased in value pretty substantially, considering. We had a economic downturn in 2022 and then it was 2023 and now we're in 2025, but that's just my perspective.
To my understanding, a lot of the the stuff you're talking about with the larger forces at play. My my personal concern, so maybe this is just where my interest is and this is what I notice most is more about what's happening with. Res- residential real estate.
Yes.
But are you saying that this is, and of course I wouldn't be surprised by this, but is it as big of a concern and issue with commercial real estate as well?
I my opinion, this is only my opinion, but I would say that it is because of COVID collapsed commercial rates. Or commercial property values, right? Then they get snapped up over time and then will slowly get rolled out as those values increase. Is what I would suspect, which is similar to what happened with residential properties after the 2008 financial crisis.
So on that topic. Specific to residential properties that could be, you know, purchased up in large swats by larger organizations and rented out. Do we like, do we have a quota for how many rental permits we will issue a year like, because I feel like that would be perhaps a cap. A preventative measure. Of sorts, but we do not.
No.
Not for.
No, nor does the zoning.
No, I'm talking about residential.
Yeah, I am too. Nor does the zoning ordinance make a distinction between whether a house is rented or sold.
Right.
Single family houses, single family house.
Sure. No, I understand that part. I'm just asking about like if you wanted to be proactive about protecting. From an influx of larger entities, just I mean honestly scooping up. A very large number of residential properties, which is what's happening. And then holding them for a an extensive period of time and only. You know, people only have access to rentals, you know. Being able to purchase a home in Meridian Township is challenging for a lot of people. So my point being a stopgap measure could potentially be having a cap on the number of rental. Permits that are issued within the township for residential properties. That's what I'm getting at. Because there, I mean, the city of East Lansing has a cap. Or regulates the number. They won't. It's it's difficult to get a landlord license in East Lansing.
I will look. I will ask the question. I no way in no position to be able to talk about it right now, but I can ask that question.
One of those things to add to our priorities list for the next time we develop it.
Well, I will note that at your next meeting, I was going to keep going with the parking discussion and bring up landscaping. Cause I think that was the next thing you wanted to talk about. Is that still the next thing you want to talk about or do you want me to bring up something else? Because if you start talking about commercial districts, that's a big discussion, but it also aligns with a master plan goal of consolidating our commercial districts.
I'm sorry.
Why? Why don't?
Did you say the master plan calls to consolidate?
There is a if I remember right, there's a master plan goal to look at and I thought I thought that maybe maybe not consolidate, but I think.
I feel like that was spurred by like the auto dealerships.
Another example, actually.
It's funny, you want to you're talking about the the big battles. I'm going to win the little battles for the little restaurants. You know, like it's it's somewhat saddening to me that, I mean, it's good. Okay, good trucking is moving out of Ario Town. It's going to move to Old Town in Lansing, right? What gets good trucking out here?
So my concern though, though, is that if we don't do this, then there are fewer places for those smaller businesses.
There must not be. My thing is there must not be a place now because we're not crawling with new restaurants, right? I mean, the like, you can argue Tante, but that's that's really, that's grab and go. Yeah, you order ahead. You can sit there, right? Same thing with the wing shop down there, right? Like the last I'm going to, the less material one I can think of that kind of fits my schema here is Anna's House. I mean, although arguably it's a chain, it's a chain with a hometown feel. Okay, fine, but like, you know, Creole closed, right? What does it take to get Creole here? I would eat at Creole. I trust them.
We need something to incentivize startup.
Yeah.
Restaurants. We need like an incubator or like a hub. We were just in Philadelphia and they have the coolest market.
Ready?
Reading, yeah. That was happened on Sunday afternoon.
It's been like that for years.
Yeah.
Right?
You know, but there were like lines out the door, and we're not Philadelphia, don't get me wrong, but maybe it's a concentration of, um, places so that you, the, the rent is shared and the, the concept is, it's sort of almost like food truck court or something like that.
You're kind of, you're kind of biting into it, but Allen Neighborhood Center does too, right?
Exactly. That could be a long conversation too, I know. I haven't had dinner yet. I think we have lots to talk about, and I think maybe if you have ideas of things that we want um, the staff to kind of focus on or bring to us to kind of help spur what we see and what we talk about next. Um, share it with him, share it with me, and we can, you know, what you have planned for now, unless you're ready to bring something else, bring what you had, but then if people would think about other things that you might wanna add to that agenda for the discussions that we have and the things that we look at, um, in, in future meetings. Give them some heads up so we're not like dumping things on you last minute, but that's okay.
Just to be clear, I say things, I get it. Not expecting to have immediate answers to the things that I am saying, I'm just saying.
Can I echo that? I see things and they are concerning and, yeah, just what's next, how? Yeah.
I'll move to adjourn.
Thank you. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. They are adjourned at eight seventeen.